...meeting in the Gardner Planning Board, which began at 3:00 PM with a sidewalk of Concorde Crossing, open space residential development proposed. First item of business, let's approve minutes from March 22nd and March 29th. If I could have a motion to that effect.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, will you approve the minutes, three A.1 separately, or two different votes?
I think we can, I think we can.
Twenty-second and twenty-ninth as presented.
Second. Motion made in second, and you'll accept the meeting minutes from March 22nd and March 29th. Any discussion? Hearing none by voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Yes, sir. Okay, good, thank you. All right, as noted for the record, we just came back from a sidewalk off Clark Street and Century Way for the proposed Concorde Crossing Open Space Residential Development. And this next item on our agenda is the pre-application discussion. We're running a few minutes late, but that's fine. And I believe Mr., forgive me, your name?
Bliss.
Bliss. I believe you gentlemen are going to be presenting to us any preliminaries, Mr. Bower, before I turn the floor over to them.
Nope, nothing right now, thanks.
Gentlemen?
So I think what we're trying to get a sense of is, what we're hoping we can accomplish is we're, we're trying to process the application and the submittal based on the procedures and the criteria that are set out in the Open Space Residential Development Regulation. And what we're hoping we can accomplish today is to just get some direction from the board, because what we would like to do is present a preliminary plan so that we can continue to get information, understand what the issues are that need to be addressed, but more importantly, we're hoping that we can develop a sense as to the number of lots that we're proposing and that the board is comfortable with that based on what can be done by right in a traditional plan and what can be proposed based under the open space regulations. And I think if we can get that sense, we would then be in a position to take this a little next step further and actually propose a preliminary plan to bring it back to further discussion.
All right, so zoning under Article eight of special residential regulations, have you considered any sort of amenities within the development?
We have not yet. I think it's, I know, two years ago now, right when they were pretty before, just to talk about walking trails, but that hasn't been, I don't think we're to that point yet. That was some of the conversation we want to have with the board, and I think even I know the land trust is here too also, who owns a buddy property, so I think it might be best to have that conversation also as we move along in this process to see what kind of amenities should be included as part of this. I know there's an outline in the regulations on what kind of amenities are allowed, but we have not got to the point that we're proposing anything in solid yet.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, Mr. [inaudible].
So maybe we can start by just, I know we talked a little bit about the site context map, the existing condition, site analysis map, that's outlined in the zoning. Walking the site today, I think we saw a lot, a lot of natural features in the site that, you know, I think would be helpful to have on a, on a plan, on one of those plans, just that we need it so we have a better understanding where those features are, the log rooms, existing roadways on the site, any larger pockets of mature vegetation.
Right, I know, I know we talked about this before too, even when we were on the property. So, and I know Trevor, you asked that question in the email, and we weren't trying to ignore you, we thought we'd had better have this conversation with you and the board at the same time would help that. And just to kind of give you an idea of what, the reason I'm showing you guys this place first is to kind of have an idea of what, at least when we looked at the site, what we were trying to accomplish by our design and then have the conversation with the board and see if you agree with, I guess, some of our, our points, and then figure out if, or at least as Peter said, move it in the direct direction. And I know some of the other comments you had had to do with the preliminary and the special permit application, we're not to that point yet, so that's, I guess at the end of the meeting, we want to wrap up with that and to get to that next point, but I think, at least when we were looking at it for a site, site context map, I think we were looking at it a little different than you were. Because when I was looking, you know, I looked at it and the applicants and Peter, you know, we all kind of sat down and talked about the site, knowing what you guys talked about two years ago, what this EVA has talked about, trying to, you know, the concerns that it came back during this EVA hearings from the abutters, trying to kind of work everything that we've heard so far into a concept plan, right? Bring to the, bring to the board, at least, start our conversation on, as Peter said, number of lots and the layout of development. And so, the first couple things that we looked at were obviously the wetlands on the property, which I have highlighted in blue. That's, that's the, one of the big, I think, keys on the site is all the wetlands out there and where they're located, where the wetlands are located closer to the, the open space that the city of Gardner owns, and I, I know eventually the city of Gardner, open space ties into the land trust property also. And so then, the other area that we're looking at is, I know one of the maps that I sent you was just your zoning map, it showed it had the overlay districts on it. One of the overlay districts on it was the watershed protection district, which is up in the, in the back corner here. That's another area that we are looking at obviously to protect as, as we're developing the open space plan. And so those are the, I guess, the two biggest points that we're looking to protect is this. We understand the comment about, as we were walking, before we walked, you talked about mature trees, but because the site was already thinned out there before, that wasn't necessarily a thought in our mind about grouping some mature trees because we knew it was thinned in the past. We knew there was a fair amount of cot roads and logging trails up there. And so that, that wasn't as, as much a concern as those areas that are talking about the wetlands and the watershed protection zone. And then obviously looking at it from a design standpoint, and I know also talk in the regulations, some of the steeper slopes. There's not a lot of steeper slopes out here, but some of the areas that are, are basically wetlands. We obviously wanted to keep away from the steeper slope as much as we could. Makes it easier to develop, you know, to be selfish, from the developer's standpoint, obviously they don't want to put, it just makes it a lot easier, cheaper to develop, correct? And so like I said, the only, there are a couple areas that we have to, that are steeper? Yes, there are to get access into the site. But then when we laid out the project, we were trying to stay in the areas that aren't as steep, areas that aren't, you know, associated with the wetlands. We tried respecting the, the wetlands, that none of the wetlands would be on any of the open space lots, that we understand that the city obviously has their no touch zone and their no build zone, so we respect those areas also as part of this to make sure that, you know, we might be showing 76 lots, but I want to make sure I'm showing 76 lots that you could build on. I know the previous plans that you had, I think, that you saw was like 93 lots, that didn't, you know, took into account some of the other stuff that you had been asking to take off of it, and that's what we were trying to do also. So if you want, I don't know how, what steps you want to take on this, we could talk about the existing conditions first, if you want to talk about the conventional plan, or if you want to talk about just the open space plan. It's, it's up to however the board wants to see it, or I don't know, Trevor, if you, if you want to talk about certain things, you know, we can, we can go through these items, item by item, and, and I think that's the whole point that we've been trying to have this meeting, is we want to have these conversations, get a lot of this information on the table, so we know the next steps to take.
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, for me?
Yes.
So, are you, so the steps under the special permit, I know I highlighted, highlighted them a couple of times too, under five, two A., B., and C., and D. That's kind of how you, how you've conceptualized, well, what the site, what the existing site conditions are, how you kind of conceptualize the positioning of the houses, then the roadways, and so backing into what you came up with as a proposed.
Development, in and of way.
So are you, are you, are you able to go through that process tonight?
I can definitely go through, yeah, exactly. That's why I want to, that's why I brought the plans, I brought some extra bigger copies too, if the, if the board wants the bigger copies in front of you, unless you don't want to, you know, keep looking at that, whatever you guys want to look at.
So, the only, the only, you know, not necessarily an issue I have, but the only concern I have is, we don't see everything, at least the plan that I, that we were given and the plan I see up there, we don't see everything existing on the site, and so, you know, do you, you know, the cot roads that we, the logging roads that we saw?
We can add those to the plan for reference purposes, so when we submit our preliminary subdivision plan, I call it preliminary subdivision plan because we're going through a subdivision process also as along the special permit.
And I think it's important to have that on the plans now to go through the process, because it actually helps you, because it's, it's, it's part of why you positioned houses in certain areas and, and the roadways and all that, so.
We did position, well, I guess, we did position the roads to follow the cot roads though.
No, 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 I'm, that's just one, one aspect of it.
Right, so I guess when we looked at it, what I'm showing is, the grade of the land, and I could kind of, I guess we should better show in the plan, would be, right, is, obviously we heard from the abutters during the ZVA process, they came out and voiced their concerns even with the ZVA process, and so we heard those concerns. A lot of the concerns had to do with traffic, but obviously everybody has concern about putting development in their backyard. And so we wanted to create a buffer between this development and the existing home. And so that's why we talked about on the property about having a hundred-foot buffer of natural growth between the residence on Century Way and the new development. And so that kind of created our boundary here. We are choosing the small lot sizes to minimize our footprint of this development, being 8,000 square foot lots. And so we looked at, all right, what could they build for units on here? Could they live within 80-foot wide by 100-foot deep lot? And that's what we started to work with, and that's kind of how we started our, our roadway and lot grid in this direction. And looking at where it sat, the majority of them sat fairly well, like I said, you could kind of see, we were staying away from the wetland here, and the wetlands up here, we didn't want to, you know, we looked at different iterations of trying to bring a road in, and, but it didn't make sense for us to, to include this area in that roadway network of the lots, and so we were trying to stay away from that. The same thing with this area over here, I tried staying as far as I could away from these, but really this 100-foot buffer zone, and then also following subdivision rules, regulations regards the radiuses, radius, radii of the center lines and so forth, it really dictated how that road would come in and the entrance. And so, you know, the, the site constraints, or, you know, when I say the 100-foot buffer zone, it's not a site constraint, but it's a self-imposed, self, you know, site constraint, because we wanted to provide that as part of this development, to kind of, you know, provide some separation between this and the abutters. You know, as we set them up in the sidewalk, if that 100-foot buffer goes away, it, it only helps the developers, because it's less road fringe. But we, we look at it as an amenity from this project to the, to the neighbors, that there's a 100-foot buffer between this project and then. And then, like I said, when we started laying out everything, started looking at the calculations that you have under the zoning bylaw, be it, you know, the open space requirement, making sure that we took into account some extra space in the open space that we know, and that when we get to the design of this, we'll need it for the stormwater. You know, so, so when we lay this out, it really, it kind of laid it, laid itself out, where like I said, if we're trying to stay away from the resource areas, keeping out the watershed protection district up here, we're not touching that, you know, keeping, like I said, almost two-thirds of the site adjacent to where all your open spaces. And we thought that, that layout would work best for all parties involved, be it the abutters, you know, the applicant obviously, and then the city and how you're trying to develop your open space, where all your open space is located, and that's kind of the way we located the development. You know, like I said, we looked at a couple of different iterations, but we didn't think any iterations were any better than what we're showing you here to, to meet the requirements that, under your regulations, but also knowing what the, the neighbors have complained about. And now, I, I know that a big complaint from the neighbors has been traffic. We're not going to address it on this plan, but they've already, you know, we already have a draft traffic report done, and when we get to the preliminary and the special permit application, we'll have that traffic report for the board to look at. But that traffic report needs to be finalized when a, a number of units gets finalized, right? And so they, they've already done that report on the, the plan before where the numbers are worse, right? I think the previous plan was like 92 lots. And so I, I can get into a little bit of the math too, if you want to, just so everybody's comfortable in where we got to the number of units.
But I, I think if I could, Wes, to your, to your point, Trevor, I think we have a majority of the information that you're interested in, that you're raising as far as five, two A., B., and C. is concerned, because some of the preliminary identification of the wetland areas, a lot of the conservation areas, we have that primarily identified. The idea was to at least have the board be able to visualize the area we're proposing to actually develop. And then, if, if we can get a sense from today's meeting that, yes, you know, we understand, we, we know how you got there, then we can start to add the other stuff on the plan that you're, you're referencing. Because I think as far as identifying the major areas of the entire site, so the board can develop a sense as to what we're doing, how we arrived between the conventional plan and what we're going to propose as an open space plan, I think we have that, and if we can develop that sense, it'll just be a continuing process of developing and adding the other stuff as we go along.
Yeah, I think we, we accomplished a lot of that on the sidewalk today too, and just, just to bring your attention, the site context map and the existing condition, site analysis map, those are two things that I think need to be, I know you gave us the GIS maps, the substitutions app, but I think we need to work on that to identify the existing site conditions that are out there today, a lot of what we saw today, but a lot of what we didn't see because we never, we didn't go beyond the, the open space development area, so.
Correct.
Just so the planning board has, and the public has a better idea what's out there beyond that, and I think that's going to help us understand better too, how you've backed into this development and how you've got there.
I think it would be important to distinguish between, like, the logging roads versus maybe where a walking trail or some type of an integrated trail might actually exist way up in the back of the property.
Yeah, I mean, there were definitely, it was more than a logging road down on the, I think, I think you're right, Peter.
It's, it's in here, and so.
I think it's, oh yeah, maybe it was halfway through.
It's in here.
It's into the development.
Yes.
But it takes, it takes a turn into the development, and so like I said, it does show on one of the old layout plans.
Yeah, yeah. So just seeing that superimposed onto the, you know, site context map would be helpful.
And just seeing, one of the reasons I kind of provided you the aerials, it wasn't necessary for our project, it was more for the neighboring properties, because I know there's a lot of open space around, and you asked about amenities, and I think the, the conversation really is about the, the trails that occur on the other properties, right?
Yeah.
And how we can maybe tie in, I know you've mentioned that in the past, about tying those into this development, and that's why I wanted to show you the aerials, because we're, we're not going to topo everybody else's property around, but.
I understand.
The aerial gives us an idea of, okay, this is an open space parcel, this is an open space parcel. You guys have a better idea of where, than we do of where all the trails are, and it's, it's great that the, the land trust is here also, so we can have a conversation about, you know, what trails are important, maybe something that we could tie into the, the design of this. But again, like as Peter said, we're, we're trying to get to a, a number, right, a number of lots that everybody is, okay, okay, now we have a number of lots. Does a lot line shift here and there to maybe provide access for a walking trail or whatever the case? Yeah, we can, we can, you know, we're not, we're not having, we don't have a definitive plan in front of you, we're not, nothing's set in stone.
Yeah, we're all married to this, where it's.
The footprints, the footprints there, but it's, you know, we can move things around here and there to make it work.
So Mr. Chairman, you think to, do you want to talk about how they backed into and came up with this type of layout? Do you want to?
Well, I guess I could, I could tell you about the, the math part of the number of lots, and I think we talked about it quickly at the last meeting, but it was no, we didn't really talk about it too much, but I can kind of go over the, at least the calculation with regards to your zoning within the open space and, and what the maximum density is, and then now where we are and why we get to that number of 76 instead of the maximum.
Please.
So, I'm curious.
Sure.
So on the, on the plan, so the total, total area, I think it's just under 90 acres, and so when you divide that out by the 40,000 square foot per lot, or per unit, that's how it's worded, per unit, correct? So it's 93 units is the max we can get out here, correct? Really the restricting factor out here is the open space and how that's worded. And so the open space has to be 50% of the parcel, but exclusive of, of wetlands, floodplains, inland set up aside for buildings, roads, parking. Okay, so that's, that becomes the restricting factor for this property. And so when, when I started backing out that number and then started looking at, okay, I need to set, set aside 50% of that for open space, that requirement comes up to about 1.87 million square feet of property, okay, which, which really reduces really what, 93 lots at 8,000 square feet. We were trying to look at a single-family lots, really that's the way these guys want to develop it. You know, we talked about doing duplexes out here because those are also, you know, I know there's some wording in the regulation about doing different kind of housing out here, but really the developer would like to do single-family dwellings. Because at one point we talked about, all right, well, here's the footprint that we can have, we have almost two acres more of open space within this layout, because we know there's going to be some stormwater improvements that you can't include as part of that open space calculation. And so we did toy around with the idea of duplexes out here also to get to that 93 units, but really the developer wants to do single-family units. And so when we looked at the way the, the area counts work for the open space requirement, it really came back to the 76 units. Like I said, we're setting aside, and I have it on here, about 77,414 square feet of open space for drainage. I know, and that was some of the conversation that Trevor and I, Trevor and I have had during this process is, I know the previous plan two years ago showed this entire parcel being included, right? Including area outside of the RR district, we made sure we took that out, we're just looking at the area within the RR district when we're doing our calculations, so we're, that's why we're at 93 units and not 96 is what was before. Now we're looking at open space, well before, this was part of the open space count, so now we have a little less space we can use for open space, so now that's been really shrunk down even more of our development. And then the previous, the plans that you saw also included stormwater in the open space, but didn't exclude that area out of there. And so when we were looking at, you know, how we got from 92 on the first plan that you guys saw back down to 76, really those areas started to, to work their way out, and that's kind of where we got to that 76 units. And like I was telling you before, really the footprint of this started with a 100-foot buffer zone, and it started with trying to keep everything out of the wetlands, knowing that we had to, you know, work with the city's, you know, no-touch zone and the no-build zone to make sure that all these lots could be built on, not, not cartoons, right? And some of the, you know, I have seen plans in the past where people will show a lot, but you can't build on it if you look at all the regulations. And so that's what we're looking at, what I was looking at trying to lay these out, they're buildable lots, right? You know, I can go to the consti- com and say, okay, you know, we're out of your 30-foot no-touch zone, out of your 60-foot no-build zone, such that we can meet those requirements also when we deal with the conservation mission at a later date. And so that's kind of how we, we laid this out, and, and yeah, it, did it benefit us that, you know, some of the cot roads are close to it, but we weren't necessarily concerned about the cot roads, we were concerned about keeping it within that footprint, away from all the resource areas, and, and keeping it, keeping that buffer there. And, and knowing that they did thin the trees out here, so we're not, we're not doing a lot of land clearing too, a lot of tree clearing, where it gets, it gets more mature as we move back onto the site, as, you know, they didn't thin as much of the property in the rear there. So that's kind of how, you know, everything kind of worked hand in hand, there was the math part of it, but also the layout part of making sure we meet subdivision rules regulations, so. There, there was a lot of things going, you know, in play there that we had to work with, a lot of the different regulations, be it your OSRD regulation, your, your subdivision rules regulations, and wetlands bylaws, so there was a lot of things going into play to lay this out the way we did, and so that's, that's when we get to that number of 76, single-family lots. And that's, you know, where the, the developer wants to go, is, is the single-family lots, they don't want to do the duplexes or anything like that, get to the 93 units, where, like I said, at one point we talked about that, you know, we, we have a footprint of usable space, do we want to show 93 units or do we want to show 76 lots? And that's what we're proposing, 76 lots.
Well, following your whole train of thought and your computations, I, I don't have a quibble with 76, but I'm just one man. Questions from the board?
And I, if I could just make one other point, this proposal, based on how many lots could be obtained on a traditional plan, it's only a 10, a 10 lot difference. So it's not so substantially more than it's.
20, isn't it? I thought you it's 56.
66 units you can do on there, because within the GR3 you can do duplexes by right.
Units, yeah, but lots, I'm talking.
Well, we look at, we were looking at units, because we're comparing 66 to 93 units, and what's, what's somewhere's in the middle is really what we were looking at.
But if you're looking at doing the single-family, let's, you know, you keep it single-family, it's 56, it's.
And, but even that's not like a substantially more of a, of a density increase, it really is.
Yeah, and that's what we were looking at, like 56, 93, and kind of somewhere's in the middle, I think that was the number we always talked about doing, is somewhere's in the middle, I think are those two numbers.
So I guess my question would be, I know you talked about the traffic, you're going to have a study, I mean, we already sleep, we already know which direction the traffic's going to go. Once, once you get out that development, they're all taking a left, they're all going up towards cot. So whatever, how many lots you have there, whenever you're proposing, the traffic is all going to go in one direction.
Correct.
So it's going to be a bottleneck with all these houses, so if you have 76 lots times two vehicles per unit, that's the rule of thumb, correct?
They look at trips per day, I think it's, depending on the size of the development, I think around this is either 10 to 12 trips per day, is what they look at, and all that stuff.
That's great, I could just tell you that. They're not, they're not leaving, they're not leaving, that's, they're not taking a right.
I can't, and I know.
They're all taking a left.
And they're not coming out of here unless it's this person maybe comes out that way, that's about it.
Well, from Century Way all the way down and from Clark Street, they're all taking a left, and nobody's going right unless they're going to the fishing gun club, that's about it. And, and yeah, and my, my second thing would be, you know, 8,000 square foot lots, it's kind of jamming these houses in there. I would think that if we wouldn't like to make a nice development, we would like to spread it out just, I like the concept, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to move, move it up, right, left, rear, I'm trying to leave everything to way, but I like to see more spacing in between, so that obviously be alleviating some of the lots. So maybe 10,000 or the frontage, you know, you have your 8,000 right there?
We may.
So in the lots, so I think we have too many lots, that's just, in my opinion, that's too many lots, 76. I would like to narrow that down, but that's up to the board also. So 8,000 square, it's not a very big lot for somebody to put a house on, and, and so I would, I would, I would, something around the 10,000, or the frontage anyway, on the sides.
Well, the problem is you create the frontage, bigger frontage, more roadway, correct? So.
Well, not necessarily, I'm talking maybe on the sides, and from, from side to side.
Yeah, and that's what we're looking at, is if you would create, so if every lot became 100 feet wide, and eight, still 8,000 square foot lots, now we create 20 feet more frontage of each, each unit, and so we create another, you know, what, 1,500 feet of roadway, so.
Well, I was, no, no, so what I'm getting at is, is I'm not trying to, the frontage, the back, it's okay where it is, I'm just talking side to side.
Yep.
So somehow, if we could make it a little bigger from side to.
Increase the frontage, keep the lots, keep the roadway layout the same.
That's correct.
Increase the frontage.
That's what I'm trying to see. So are you asking me how many lots, I don't know how many lots that would shrink, each lots would shrink.
Simple math, you're asking for a quarter reduction of lots, and I can.
So.
So just, just to compare apples to apples.
I don't want to compare apples, sir, I just, I just want to know what it would be then if you quartered a lot.
And maybe we don't look at the whole site in that aspect, maybe we look at the, the part of the area that backs up to the open space in that aspect, like the back road, the.
Some of the lots where they, like, there are a couple of lots that have to be wider, because they, when you butt the open space, you have certain, different offsets.
Yes.
And so a couple of the lots over here are a little bit bigger than they have to be in, in different orientations, because they, you know, your offsets are there. So, so just so, you want to say, when we look at lots or developing lots like this, with the sewer water out here, so we're going to tie it to the municipal sewer and water.
Yes.
So that's why when we look at a lot size, 8,000 square foot lot, it isn't out of the ordinary, because we're looking at a 60-foot wide envelope, you know, a deep enough envelope that they can make the houses work, and it's not going to be, they don't all have to be a colonial, it could be a different style home that fits onto that, onto that envelope of the home. And so we're trying to, to meet that, you know, 8,000 square foot.
And I understand that, I mean, you look at your rural residential three, I mean, they're asking 12, even single families, 12,500 square feet for a single family.
And that's what we, we, our conversation, we look at the GR3, it's 8,500, right? So that's.
Right, and all I'm asking is maybe we can, like you mentioned, maybe open it up a little bit more, a little bit more room in between the, the houses this way, not that way, not frontage, I mean, I like the concept, I, don't get me wrong.
So i- if we were to leave it like that, and if we were to change the frontage to 100, 100 feet, we're going to lose quarter of lots, and I think, I know the applicants And I think, I know the applicants are gonna be happy about it.
And again, maybe not the whole development, but may, maybe a portion of the development and just to come to some type of, you know.
I can just tell you the residents don't like seventy-six lots. A little bit have a hard time pushing that.
I, I know, I know the residents aren't gonna like five lots.
They don't, that's correct. But we're, we're here as citizens of Gardner and planning board, so we're trying to make it fair for everybody, correct?
And that's, and that's why we're asking for, we're not asking for ninety-four units, we're, we're coming to a number of seventy-six. So that's, and that's why I said, that's why we, we looked at the idea of duplexes, but we're looking at seventy-six single-family lots where it fit in more with what's out there. I mean, I know there is some multifamily dwellings here, but over here, there's the smaller lots.
Yep.
Um, the second next street over, Brookside is the smaller lot, um.
I'm just saying, I'm just trying to help you guys out also. And I'm trying to be fair for the citizens and the residents that live on Clark Street, Century Way, Brookside. Uh, the, even the people who live on Leo Drive, we talked about that. Anybody who lives in that area. Seventy-six lots is a lot of homes for that area. I know, you said the same thing, and I understand. Nobody wants anything in their backyard. I get it. Nobody wants anything in their front yard.
Yeah, nobody wants Leo Drive, nobody wants.
That's correct. And that's correct. So I'm not disagreeing with you there. But I'm just saying, uh, try to be fair for everybody if we can eliminate some of these lots.
Well, I think, if I.
That's my opinion.
If I could just make one more point, Trevor, and I know what other, so, and that was one of the reasons we're trying to keep this separate from everything, provide that hundred buffer zone. And I know we talked about it on the, on the site, is if, if, if we were to do this type of development, we're creating those parcels here so that the other residences would have a little more space there. So there's a little more buffer there.
That's correct.
For these residents here. So we're creating a little more buffer.
That's right.
So, yeah, these lots are gonna be smaller, but it's not gonna seem as bad to the residents over here.
Yeah, and I understand that. I'm not, and we appreciate what you did for those people that are on Century Way, you give them a buffer. And then, and of course, this design, it creates more of Clark Street for those residents going towards Pearlie Brook, so they don't have these houses back room as your, your other plan had on residential.
Well, and, and that's, but it was, we had to do it by right.
That's correct. We asked you to do that, that's fine. But all I'm saying is seventy-six lots is a lot of lots. Uh, somehow, I think the board, I'm not too sure, uh,
I would also make the point that this is private property.
Right. Well, I, I, but it's, it's still up to us to just.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, on Paul's first point on the traffic concern, I, I, I get it. So what we're gonna be requesting is a third-party reviewer on that anyways, uh, to review that, probably the stormwater. Um, maybe even the aspects of meeting, you know, the, the open space residential development guidelines. But that's something we'll be asking the, the developer to provide to us. We have third-party engineers on, you know, on call, engineers under contract and. Who's that?
Time to bond new traffic too?
They just actually acquired a firm that does, yeah, does traffic. Out of Boston, yeah. Um, but yeah, so we'll be, we'll, you know, on behalf of the planning board, we'll have the third-party reviewer review all that and, and make any recommendate, necessary recommendations that they, uh, feel are in the best interest of the city and, and the board, so.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I add a little something from the land trust?
In one moment, please. I'd also, I'd, I'd also highly recommend, uh, adding a landscape architect to your team.
So that was part of what we were, so that's what we're talking about, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, I think Trevor asked us some questions, but I think they were the next step in the process. Right now, I think that's the last time we were, said that we were trying to stay within the, the first step, right? And the landscape architect was gonna come in that next section, I think, and that's what we were talking about.
Okay.
So, and we did, Trevor did already alert us to that item and that, so that was something that we did talk about, but, but I don't know if there's, I don't, so I, I, Paul, I was trying to keep the conversation until what we were just talking, I wanna, if we can hammer away the lot part of it and then.
Or any other questions?
Landscape architect becomes detail of, of, of a plan, right?
Just kidding, if any of the board members have any.
Yep, carry on.
Question on lots D through J on the front, how's that accessed?
So these are gonna be tied to the, they'll go to the, uh, Century Way of others, they'll go to them. And so they're, this, there's a stone wall that runs here along the zoning line.
Yep.
Some of the people have already kind of impeded on to the, the property of the applicant because they thought that was their backyard, because everybody thinks the stone wall is their property, right? Which the stone wall is not their property.
He's giving it to the residents.
And so the intent of the project is to, to give these parcels to the people on Century Way to, to block off their, their property, they'll own all the property in GR three.
And the, and the reason that that sort of came up, um, in my discussions with attorney, um, Flick, with some of the issues that were raised, um, at the zoning board, especially with the, the, the chicken property and the right-of-way issue. Um, when, when he and I discussed that there would be some areas that might be abutting land or open, uh, he suggested that would make sense, that, that land would go to the abutter because the only real use is for the abutter to use. So it's something that the applicant would, would consider and, and it works well, um, for the area.
It's, it creates almost like a hundred and fifty, hundred and seventy-five foot difference from the back of that lot to where their property line act really is.
Which those people should be happy, yes.
Well, I think it counts cleanup.
That's correct. And like I said, I thought that was very nice.
So there would be areas over here where there would be a parcel potentially to an abutter, an area over here, uh, potentially, and then all along here, so.
Because the abutter over here has their two sheds and it, and it feeds on to the, actually the applicant's land. And so there's gonna be a parcel C over here that would clean that up also. So they would just retain that property that they have their sheds on. And then the chickens would get a little bit of space there.
Questions from the board members?
I just like that, I like the question, but I think it's too crowded.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Borger?
Just a couple of quick questions. I think, um, I'd like to see, uh, some common open space within development uh, for the residents, uh, maybe some park space, some type of, you know, again, if you, if you have the landscape architect involved.
That's, that's where he comes in.
Creating some usable, common, open space within the development for the residents there. Um, you know, I, I, I don't think, I'm asked for like tennis, tennis courts, basketball courts and stuff. Cause obviously then your homeowners association has to.
But it maintains.
Has to maintain that. But if you're, you know, if, if we're, talk about cutting grass, having some out, you know, somewhere where they can actually recreate on-site, um, and have there maybe some association functions, um, you know, neighborhood functions, something to that. So, and one other thing, um, linkages to your neighboring sites. Now, I know definitely there's trail systems down in the city land to the east. Um, I'm pretty sure there's some trail systems up on North County Land Trust land and maybe even the city forest land to the north. So thinking about how you can link that development in to, uh, those trail systems. And I don't see you doing that with, without, you know, losing some of your, not a lot, but one or two lots here and there by creating those corridors for the, uh, for the residents and possibly even a small parking area um, for people to utilize within the development.
So like, maybe they both tie into each other, but I, I know under the common, common open space ownership, right? There's really three options, the City of Garter, a nonprofit organization, which I know the land trust had already expressed interest of trying to acquire this open space.
We approach them less, by the way, yeah.
Okay, well, she, she said something to me when we were on the sidewalk, so I was giving her, I apologize, gave her credit instead of, and then.
I, I, I didn't say that to take credit, I just wanted to clarify, that's all.
Then in association, we did want to have an association, we did not want to have an association as part of this project. We'd rather have the open space either go to the city or, or land trust.
One of the, one of the, um, things that was brought to my attention early on uh, was that there was always some type of an interest by the city um, to somehow acquire or own a majority of this piece for protection of the, the wetlands and for protection of the reservoir. Um, so one of the things that we thought might have been a logical conclusion was for the open space to go to the city. Uh, that's why I mentioned it to you the other day, and I'm sure we can strike a balance.
And to locate it all on the exterior of the development and not, I know, I think the development that you had seen before did show a small area within this loop, a, a loop road similar to this. But again, we tried to balance what we thought was being told to us was more important was tying this all open space together with that and not have a open space in there. And really, like I said, there was intent not to have an association. We're trying to design everything as a subdivision roadway, eventually get the, the city to take the roadway over and not have any association over here. It just makes it a lot cleaner when the project's all said and done, not to have an association involved with this at all. And so there's, we could do it a couple of different ways. You know, we could do open space that has recreational on it, but I think it might, we, we thought it'd be better to have the, the trail system and tie into the trail system to have that. You know, and if it's, put a couple trails in in the parking lot instead of having a playground, it's, I mean, we can, we can do it either way. It's just a matter of where the open space is located, right?
Yeah, I, I never said, I never said a playground though, I don't think. I, I, I don't think you want something that, you know, you're gonna have to put a lot of money into, maintain, um, replace. Uh, I just, I just think some open space, common open space within the development for the residents that you're building the development for makes a lot of sense. Because they're small lots, there's not gonna be a lot of room on the lots, once you build on them, uh, for people to recreate outdoors uh, as a group or, or individually, um, other than the limited area with, with, on their lot. So just a thought, that's all. I mean, and.
And that's why we, yeah, I'm just giving you the reason why we didn't do it that way. It's, we were trying to, I guess, balance what we were told is the important error. So wherever the open space goes, it doesn't really matter to us. It's, it's an acre of open space in the middle or open space in the outside?
I would do, I would do right in the middle, it would probably look good.
That is easily trafficable, where a community could get together to have a social event.
Yeah, maybe you have a, a, like, a, um,
Like a fire pit.
Or, or what do you call those things, uh?
Pavilion.
Pavilion, yeah.
Pavilion.
Pavilion for outdoor, you know, barbecues or.
Yes, sir.
So if we were to have, go back to your question about the small lots, if we were to have a central open space.
Okay.
Would you still, would you be okay with the smaller lots?
It's the first time I've heard of it.
Would I be okay? Well, that's up to the boards, I suppose. I'm not, right. So, yeah, obviously if we do have that, we are eliminating some lots, so I probably wouldn't.
Uh, no, we would just take open space from one area to another area.
Like where? I thought he mentioned maybe towards the middle where those lots are.
Well, then we could either take it from here, take it from the back. We, we could, we could, like I said, the roadways aren't set in stone.
Right.
We're not, we're not even, right, we're not even at the perimeter stage yet. We're at a conceptual.
Well, we, I think we're all in agreement. We like the concept, we like the design of that. I think a couple of us mentioned that, yeah, a little bit maybe.
You know what I'm saying? If I change it a little bit and put some open space in the middle.
That's, that's correct.
We still keep the same amount of lots.
I think a couple of us, or two or three of us, think the lots are still too small.
And that's why I asked if it's a trade-off where we have common open space in the middle.
I think that's an interesting though, from what you're presenting to us now.
Correct.
Um, incorporating some other aspects, but then changing the design so you maintain what you have. So, and, and then lessen the benefit to the city by, by reducing, you know, overall open space, so.
Well, not the overall, the overall open space has to stay the way it is. The number has to stay the way it is, right? Your calculations are very specific. The amount of open space that they're required to provide has to stay that number.
Yeah.
And it has to be, and I did. We're at, uh, almost sixty-eight acres, sixty-seven and a half acres of open space, right? About nineties, what, nineties, ninety acres, or whatever the, the total area is.
Yeah, so you, so you're over your fifty percent.
Well, we are because you can't include wetlands, right? You can't include wetlands in your calculation.
So including, including the.
Including wetlands, we're well over fifty percent of the entire.
But not including them, where are you at?
What's that?
Not including the wetlands, where are you at?
Where at fifty, over fifty percent.
You are over fifty percent.
Yeah, cause that's, that's the way, at least the way I read the wording and, and I checked with Peter too, who's our attorney, right? So.
The way I understood what you just said though, by creating common open space within the.
So in here, I would be looking at changing the roadway layout a little bit to come out here, to create an open bubble in here. So the total area of open space doesn't change. It's just how it's located. Or do we make this a fifty-foot strip and take that fifty-foot strip and put it in between those lots?
So, but.
There, there's ways to.
But Wes, what I think I'm, I'm saying, and I think Paul's saying is creating the common open space increases your open space. So now you're providing somewhat greater amount of open space.
Well, we're.
And, 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 and you're, and you're getting your.
So you're asking for a reduction in the lots now. So now you're asking for a reduction in the lots by making lots bigger and you're asking for a reduction in the lots.
Well, again, there, there is a balance, yeah. There, you know, we're, we're asking for different things, so. And we're just making these recommendations so then you can go back to the drawing board and figure out how you want to apply them.
And not get too caught up in the weeds right now.
Right.
Well, but I, but I answered the question, is I don't want to come back and, uh, again, well, the num, max number of unit, right, we were talking, max number of units is ninety-three out here, okay, by, by your zoning requirements. We're not doing ninety-three units. We could have proposed duplexes and, and done that and been at ninety-three units, but we're at seventy-six lots, single-family lots. We're providing a hundred buffer between the residents and the, and the open space in the exterior because that's the way we were led to believe that was the more important area. If you want more open space in, in the center, we're gonna take open space from the outside away. Because at some point, the, the project becomes uneconomical.
I'm not saying I want it, I'm saying it's, I, I, I would recommend doing it for the residents that you're building.
Well, well, that's why we're having the conversation today, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna have a full design done and come back and say, well, that's, we're not approving this, right? I'd rather have the conversation today and let's get those items on the table. And that's why I asked a question to Mr. Cormier, I said, if we were to provide open space in the middle, would you be okay with the lots being the size they were? Cause now we're providing them an open space in the middle that they can all congregate. Cause that was, the concern is, you have a small lot, you don't have an area to, to have a, have a party, right? I mean, we could, or have a gathering. And then, or are we better off having a fifty-foot strip here and a fifty-foot strip in the middle there to have that common, uh, open space? There's a million ways to do this, but I, that's why I asked a question to the board members, because at the end of the day, you guys are voting on it, right?
So apparently you don't want to deviate from seventy-six lots. Is that correct?
I, I, I know the number of lots.
No, is that correct, sir?
It's gonna be critical.
Is it seventy-six? That's what you want and that's where you're standing, bud?
Seventy-six, seventy-four, around that number.
And you're, you're stirring at seventy-six?
Well, I don't wanna see it.
Well, I don't know, I'm just asking you, you don't have to look at anybody else.
Well, they're, they're the people, they're the.
And they don't want to make the decision.
I don't make the decision, I don't have to do that, but I'm just telling you.
But you're putting us in a difficult position that your, that your group, seventy-six lots.
But I don't, I don't, I don't think we should just, it, it's hard to just have a discussion about the number of lots without taking into consideration.
Well, he just said he didn't want to come back unless.
But.
The gentleman finish.
But I think what, what, the whole purpose of the open space residential development um, takes other matters into consideration, um, sensitive areas, things of that nature. Um, what we're proposing, instead of coming in with, say, eighty lots or eighty-six lots or ninety lots.
Units, units.
Uh, units, I'm sorry. Okay, units. Um, we, we, we obviously looked at this, we had discussions with the applicant. And if we were to look at all of the elements that are in your open space, the reason why we make these proposals, we felt that seventy-six lots was already a concession, uh, in the sense that we know we could put more, um, but that just would be something that wouldn't fly, probably would be more resistance. So we've already done that. That's why I think if we look at the regulations and we follow the reason why we're making this proposal, um, the, the seventy-six lots is already a concession of a significant number of lots.
Good.
So we felt it was a good balance between what could go in there by right and what might be able to go in there by right with a little more force um, versus, you know, utilizing the open space regulation to balance between keeping the open space, having other, if things come into consideration, but still making the development economically viable, um, for, for all parties involved.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Wes, what's the percentage of open space at this point in time on the site?
You, including wetlands?
No.
So not including wetlands?
Yeah, so meeting the fifty percent criteria.
So like I said, we have seventy-seven thousand square feet more than we need to meet that number. Uh, we are at.
Yeah, acre and a half, acre and three-quarters.
Square fifty-two percent.
Yeah. So how many more units are you gonna be able to fit on their extra two percent of property?
Well, it's not, we wouldn't change the, we, we would change the lot lines and make, instead of single-family, we'd make duplexes.
Yeah.
To get, get the units. Right, we're talking units, we're not talking lots. So your regulation calls units, it's one unit per forty thousand square feet.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why when Mr. Kepalast was trying to say apples and apples, like, we're, we're also trying to talk units and units. And that's why, like on the by-right plan, I show a number of lots, but also a number of units.
Yeah.
Because your, your OSRD regulations talk units, not lots, right?
So I, I can't speak on behalf of the board, but if you came in here with a project with two family homes on every lot, you're not gonna get the special permit.
Well, it wouldn't be every lot, but it would be, it would be spread out, right?
So.
What, and.
We're talking single-family homes, right?
Yeah. Well, that's, that's the preferred option for the applicant to, yeah, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that would work. Yeah, absolutely, I think that would work very well.
I think it fits better. And I know there is some multifamily houses out there, but that's not the intent of it. You know, there's plenty of multifamily that we walk by, right, on Century Way that...
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Um, but really, we're, we're trying to fit this in with the single-family that's been going on out there, the rest of the, there is real single-family.
Oh, I know, I, I, I just have a question about the hundred-foot strip.
Could you, uh, for, for the record, could you, your name and your affiliation?
Yes, I'm Joanne Kristoff, the Director of Land Protection for North County Land Trust, which is the land trust that covers Gardner. And we are an abutter to this project. Um, I have a number of comments, but my question right now is whether the fifty percent open space calculation includes that hundred-foot wide buffer strip?
Yes, it does, yeah.
Um, I will speak out on behalf of the land trust to say that that does not provide, um...
Any benefit to your organization?
Not even a little bit.
And, and, again, we don't, we don't necessarily, again, we, I know the applicants would be fine, I think, giving all the open space to you at that. Correct me if I'm wrong, wrong, right? I mean, you would, you would say, yes, we have to give you all the open space, but if you don't want it, then our next lot...
I, I just wanna make sure that if it's in the calculation...
Yeah.
Um, that, that...
It is.
That changes how I think about the, the fifty percent. Um, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to keep going with my comments, or do you wanna get back to me when, when it's a good time for you?
When do you have to be?
I have another hour.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Carry on, Mr. Chief, would you?
Well, thank you, thank you, I will. Um, so, the first thing I wanna say is that the open space residential development, uh, ordinance that the City of Gardner has is a great thing for Gardner. It's a great thing for developing housing that's very much needed everywhere in Massachusetts right now. And it's a great thing for protecting open space, especially open space that abuts already protected over, open space, and the city forest, and North County Land Trust's, uh, Rome Conservation Area. Um, and it's all, it's all a balancing act, developing housing and providing ecologically viable, um, open land that makes life on this planet possible. I do think, I do think the engineering is jumping the gun a little bit. I know you're coming back with preliminary subdivision plans. And I, and I understand that the, the OSRD process is really counterintuitive to many engineers who, who start with, with roads and then fill in the house lots, and this process asks me to do it completely backwards. As Trevor was saying, uh, existing conditions, site conditions, um, mature trees, there aren't too many out there, but there are some. The network of cart roads, and logging roads, and woods roads, um, the wetlands, which are shown on the plan, but have not yet been submitted to the Conservation Commission. Um, I've been through OSRD many, many times in the town of Air. Um, we have yet to find an engineering firm that, that follows the stepwise plan that's so carefully laid out in a bylaw or ordinance. Um, and I understand why that is. I'm a recovering building contractor myself. Um, I just let you know what I think about the hundred-foot, um, buffer strip there. Um, it's disconnected from the other open space by roadways, so it has really next-to-no ecological value. I understand it has social value to be, be a buggers, and that's not to be completely discounted. Um, North County Land Trust would very much like to, uh, acquire the fee interest in the open space. We would probably then put a conservation restriction on it with another land trust, so that it's just doubly, triply protected from, from, uh, being developed ever. Um, and my last point is that the houses in the middle of the loop have no access to, to the open space. So, I would love to see, um, at least two, possibly three, um, deeded sort of fingers that come to the roadway, so that we're not walking over somebody else's yard to get to the open space. Uh, I think that's something Trevor was interested in also.
Yeah, that is, and that's one of the issues to count out there.
Yep. And, and so if that, you know, if you, if you have to lose a couple of lots, I, I understand, you, you come to a, a meeting like this, um, asking for the moon, and, and we work backwards from there to, uh, something that's reasonable and in balance, and gives the developer the ability to, uh, develop the property, but also makes for a livable, uh, neighborhood. This, this is kind of dense. Um, I, I, I understand that. Um, the value to the outside houses backing up to protected open space, um, results in higher prices for those houses. There's, Mass Audubon has all kinds of statistics about how houses that abut, directly abut, uh, protected open space have more value than, than the houses in the, in the middle. And yet, in an OSRD, the houses in the middle should be able to get into the open space across, uh, a deeded accessway. Um, I think that's all I have to say at the moment. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your contribution. Again, I think that's where a landscape architect would be invaluable. Um, where I'm getting hung up is, if they were to massage a bubble, for lack of a better term, of, of open space there in the cluster in the middle, I, I, I can't envision exactly how that would work.
Well, there's a couple of different ways we could do it, is shrink this to fifty feet.
Oh, yeah.
Take some of the open space and put it in there, right, and move the road closer to Century Way and, and create that open, opening there. Or, take some of the open space in the back and, and push this out that way.
Okay, yeah, I, I wasn't...
And those are the, the two ways, I, at least trying to lay it out and still trying to keep, obviously, the, somewhat of a buffer to the residents there. Uh, but maybe it's not a hundred, maybe it's fifty feet. Uh, you know, the single-family residences are still gonna get those parcels, it doesn't really change. You know, that, that issue is just gonna be in that strip there. There's a fairly good slope in here between that and the, the multifamily dwellings. So, there's a, a, a natural wall, I guess, of earth there that kinda creates a little bit of a buffer for them, where they sit down a little lower. So, if we go to a fifty-foot buffer there, it doesn't, that's where I would, I guess, start to, you know, trade from there to there.
Yeah, I'd hate to see that hundred footer get, get shaved.
Yes.
Just for the sake of your, your other abutters there, so... That kinda brings me towards access points to the trails, and the woods, and the fields, and so on and so forth, that, that our guest mentioned.
One of the things that I, I did is I, I did leave a hundred-foot buffer here between this and that parcel, just to, to make it uniform. And I, I did look at putting a parcel here, and getting rid of a parcel in the back there, and splitting up that access, so, so we would have, whatever, a twenty-foot strip. Probably twenty-foot strips along the way there, wherever they can, so we can get some fingers in there to provide that access. So, there's something that I did, took out previously, but, you know, from a, trying to keep that corridor there. But if, if, if this is a useless corridor, from this, you know, hearing from the land trust, that the corridor is already better suited here, it doesn't really matter to, to us, uh, how that gets moved around. So, one lot gets removed out here, and kinda gets spread out with twenty-foot fingers in, and then we just, you know, change the lot there. 'Cause it's, it's kinda just dead space there, so...
Yeah, that, that could, I don't, again, not speaking for all my colleagues here, that kind of appeals to me. You get that, you get that a little bit of, little bit elbow room, uh, you're still maintaining, you know, a decent amount of lots. So, again, you have a, a economically viable project, and you get those corridors out into the open space.
And just, just to clarify, um, it, it was always my understanding, and, um, really didn't understand until I had the conversation yesterday with Trevor, and, and hearing the comments today. It was always my understanding that the city, uh, was very, uh, much wanting this property. So, we kinda viewed it as, okay, just block it off, if you will, for lack of a better term. If the city wants it to protect that back area, and they're ultimately gonna have it, then... But, obviously, based on my conversation yesterday with Trevor and the comments we're hearing today, there's a little more integration of open space and areas that you're looking for.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just comment a little bit. So, I think it is the, the city's, um, priority to, whether it owns it or not, to set aside that property for open space because of its close proximity to the backup water supply. I think the challenge comes in, if the city owns it as, as open space, we're required to, to, um, submit reports to the state e- every year. We don't do that.
Okay.
North County Land Trust, our partner in, in other projects, that, yeah, that owns other property within the city, does do that. They have staffing capacity to do that. We don't. And that's why we bring them in as a partner, because they're good stewards, and they, and that's, that's what they do.
And what I've seen in the past is, is a, a dean that would run development to them.
Yes.
With a statutory reference to the general laws that puts it as a conservation restriction for...
Right, so, via Article ninety-seven land, and, and then we would also put a conservation restriction on it, just belt and suspenders.
All right.
Anything else, gents?
Just real quick, Mr. Chairman, if I may, make sure you check yourself good for ticks.
Yes.
I pulled, I pulled, I pulled one off me during the meeting.
Oh, did you really?
Yeah.
Jeez. Great. All right, so, approaching, approaching it, uh, those fingers, as we call them, it, it might cost you a couple lots, a few lots, but you, you give that a shot with your, your talent and your skill, and let's see. All right, this isn't, uh, this isn't an item that we're voting on, this is just a, uh, working meeting.
Go ahead.
No, no, I'm asking, yeah.
So, I, I guess, are we done, is the board done the conversation about those items? Because, I guess, at the end, we wanna get to what's the next step, right, or, or where, where are we gonna go next on this? I know that was, we're making sure we kinda keep moving up, you know, your checklist of what's, what's next here. So, I don't know, before we, before we're done with the...
Move on to next steps?
Trevor, you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
I have nothing to add at this point.
All right, so, next steps.
So, at least, and, um...
My thought was that we would just submit a preliminary subdivision plan first.
A preliminary plan, I think, but it's, we're gonna be a preliminary subdivision.
Whether, you know, no, not the open space, uh, special permit yet, um, more of a preliminary plan that starts to incorporate a lot more of what we've discussed today, uh, to give a sense, so that if we can really have a preliminary plan that everybody's comfortable with, then we move to, you know, the actual application and what have you.
Along with the site concept plans that we talked about today, um, produced by a landscape architect with the...
Well, so, I guess...
With, with, oh, wait, well, let me finish first. With the process, that, so the next time we meet, we can go through the process that's outlined in the zoning under five...
Two, five, A, B, C, D.
Yeah.
So, the landscape architect part of it, and so it's gonna be, uh, I guess, a working, it's gonna be working together. It's not gonna be a plan that they really prepare, because they're gonna use the plans that, our existing conditions plan to outline areas that they think are, um, I guess, important.
Yeah, I understand, but they have...
I just wanna make sure they're, 'cause, 'cause when we get, and it's funny, 'cause when we do subdivisions, though, when we bring a landscape architect on, it's when the design is getting done. They're, they're, they're on to bring the...
Understood.
The, the prettiness of the, the project, right? And so, a lot of the items that we already pointed out, they're gonna point out again to you, they're just gonna look at...
And maybe more.
Yes.
Maybe more.
And that's why we want them involved, that just...
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just saying, it's not gonna...
I know.
It, it's gonna be, uh, together, it's not gonna just be them preparing the plan to you. I, I just wanna make sure that's, that's clear, 'cause I, I, I know the way it's worded, to me, it's very odd. And I, I asked the guys in the office, have you ever done a landscape architect, not subdivision? We couldn't think of one that a landscape architect has done, uh, because it's usually engineers and surveyors who do subdivisions. So, that, it was an odd, odd section of your regulations.
But being an open space residential development, I think it's important to have that, that, uh, professional insight into it at, at an early stage.
I don't...
I, I would be fair to characterize it as, as that individual be working in consultation with you.
And that's what I wanna make sure, right?
We understand.
And that was my point. I don't think it says that we have to have a landscape architect present separate plans. It, it really just says that he has to be able, he or she has to be able to demonstrate...
Part of the process.
That we incorporated the items that are in five, two, A, B, C, and D in our design, so that we can point it out to the board.
That's my understanding, which is why I use the word consultant.
And that, that's all, we just wanna make sure, 'cause it was, yeah, that's all. We wanna make sure we're on the same...
So, you're a drawings?
Well, just make sure, no, but just make sure that we're on the same page. We didn't wanna come back and have a consultation, probably, plan, then, and then, okay, you guys aren't doing the right thing, that's all.
Yeah, I think we understand.
And I, I know there hasn't been a lot of, when was the last cluster, Brookside?
Yeah, and that was done before...
That was done...
Under our, under a, under a different zoning code and...
So, there's nothing, there's no, there's nothing to look at that say, okay, well, here's, here's what somebody else did, uh, right? We're kinda blazing the new trail with regards to the regulation, right?
Unfortunately, to my knowledge, no, there isn't, because the zoning was different with Brookside, which you just said.
Yeah, and it was amended in the mid-two thousands, which may have, I don't think it impacted it, because it was already approved, I'm not sure exactly what they amended.
Which was before our time. So, I see, yeah, yes, sir, thank you. All right, Mr. Paul, you had something?
Yeah, so, before we close this, I just wanna make sure that we're on, uh, the young lady over there from, uh, North County Land Trust, she, she mentioned maybe taking a couple lots on the top, so people from the middle could go right through open space. But then you commented that you'd use that bottom spot.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, we'll lose one or two of the...
Right, but you're not gonna build on that spot. There, yes.
Yes.
You want to.
Yeah. To make up a lot, we'll lose a lot of here, would make a lot of here.
Well, again, that defeats the purpose, maybe, for these people living on there, they, they won't be able to get anywhere.
Living on where?
On Century Way, or it would be able to...
If I, what I'm saying is, if I lose a lot, which is eighty feet wide, I could put four twenty-foot strips going out to the backland space out here, so everybody in this area out here could get out to a walking path.
I understand your concern.
So, those people down on Century Way, sir, on the bottom there?
Yeah. They would just come up, and we would have a twenty-foot strip instead of a hundred-foot strip, is what I'm saying.
So, how are they gonna get over there? I mean, I'm saying, because if you wanna put a lot, if you wanna put a lot...
We would, we would, I would, I would put it in here instead.
Okay.
What I would say is, look at this line here.
I don't think we need to worry about losing and winning right now, it's just...
Yeah, there's no sense to get caught up in the minutia or the weeds right now.
We can hash that out when they...
I understand, I just didn't want to have to make extra work and come back.
Let, let me show you what we're thinking, and if, if you want something different, we can...
Okay.
But, that's what I'm saying, because access to the wetlands is really, it's not getting anywhere, right? If it's a twenty-foot strip here instead, I think it's a better, better suited location, right? And I think we're talking about trying to make it more accessible, open space.
I'm just trying to make it desirable for these people to live on these, on these streets that come up, that, there's not already houses right on their, on, on top of their property, that's all. So, that last person there, I mean, I'm just trying to make sure, on Brookside Drive, uh, these people, they should have buffers, and, and I see you have it. And like I said, I, I, I do like the concept, I have no problem with that. And you've helped these people on the bottom, and, and obviously, you helped these people on Clark Street, because it's not so close to their house either, so... But I'm just trying to make sure that everybody has a chance to...
Well, there is...
Yep.
Two, acre and a half of land in between, right, between Brookside and, and so that's...
Okay.
So, it was just, it was just a corridor. I, I think the corridor is a better place than most else.
Okay, that's fine, sir.
That's what I was gonna say.
That's fine, that's why I just...
One more comment.
By whom, it's?
This has been on my mind the whole time, and I think it was mentioned out in the field, but, and maybe Joanne can, um, offer her opinion on it. But, that hundred-foot buffer, um, is it a possibility to put a walking trail through there? Um, possibly even a paved trail for the use of the residence, probably somewhere through the middle of it? And I'm just thinking out loud, I just, uh, came to my head when I was out there, and, um, it would make it, it would make it a little more, I think, practical... As an open space area.
As a, as a, as a...
A re- a recreation area?
An amenity, really not, it wouldn't be ecological open space, but it would be psychological open space. open space, which has value also.
Yeah, and again...
More like a right-of-way than really open space for people that have access.
Right, right, yeah, a recreational trail, and we've been doing a lot of that throughout the city, more in the downtown, but, you know, up the one forty and all the way down to the Hubbardson Line on sixty-eight, so, trying to get people to use more types of, yeah, yeah, multimodal transportation opportunities, but that's just something I thought, I thought about, and you could maintain a buffer between the rear yards and, and the path back there, just a thought, and again, Joanne used the word amenities, you know, as an open space residential development, and again, I go back to my open space comment, there are absolutely no amenities on this site for the residents there.
Right.
So, just keep that in mind as you go back to the drawing board and...
Right, and Mr. Chair, if I could just add, the, the landscape architect requirement of the ordinance would, would help shape this space, you know, they, the, the, the thing that engineers think about landscape architects is that they just shrub it up, you know, they plant the, plant the shrubs at the end of the project, but, but landscape architects are really trained to shape space using buildings and, and planting materials and walls and whatnot, and they, they really do connect people to their environment that way, so I, I think, I think it's a great, a great line in the, in the OSRD to require a landscape architect, and if you could think about them as shaping space rather than just making things pretty, it might be easier to swallow.
Well, not, not to swallow, it's just, I, I, I just have too many bad experiences about them not looking at the regulation and just looking at making it pretty, that's all I am, and, and we are, we have at least four different regulations I can think of off the top of my head that we are beholden to on this project, that they need to be aware of also, so that's, that's where, it's, it's a fine line, right, where...
It is, it's a bal, all of this is a balancing act.
Correct, if, if it wasn't a subdivision, it'd be, there'd be a little more flexibility there, but it's a subdivision too, so there's some regulations that we need to...
And at the end of the day, it needs to be somewhere that people want to live, and, you know, balancing density with desirability is something that the engineers and the developers need to be aware of.
I think that, I think we're...
Is that it, members of the board, all in?
Trevor, can I ask one question?
I'll be the chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Paul.
So, Mr. Chair, well, the reason I was gonna ask, Mr. Chair, can I ask Trevor a question? It's more procedural, time, timeline-wise, and the reason I asked you the question is because it's gonna come through your office, when we submit a preliminary plan, how long in advance do you need it before a meeting? To get, because it's gonna be a preliminary plan, are you still putting in the newspaper?
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to put the ad seven days in advance, yeah, um, can we talk offline on that? I, I can't give you a, a date right now.
Okay, I know we're so close to the next meeting, I can't imagine we're gonna meet the next meeting, but I just want to make sure we're not...
Yeah.
May ninth, if I am likely.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, there's, I, I'd like to have a review period with staff internal, and then, you know, advertise it a week in advance, I believe that's what the requirements are, so, let's, let's talk.
Okay.
It, I mean, our next meeting is May ninth, and so we probably, we won't make that one, I'm not sure if, if the boards will be able to meet again in May, that's something I'm gonna have to discuss with them, and so then in the meeting after that is, next meeting is June thirteenth.
June fifteenth?
Thirteenth, yeah, second Tuesday of the month. I know that pushes it kind of far out, but it's...
It's not that far.
Yeah.
Reason, I, I asked a question just so it's out there, right, so...
So, I think, you know, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, if, if everything, if, depending on where you guys are at, um, I, we could probably shoot for the June thirteenth, but let me, let's talk about it offline, as far as when I need all the information by and all that, and we can set up a timeline.
Okay.
Is that good, Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah, if we're gonna do an off-cycle meeting, we, we can do that too, assuming everyone's available.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Now, I'm thinking of...
I just felt that under my shirt, I'm like, yeah.
All right, bravo, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time, Mr. Chair.
Thanks for, for the walk.
Thank you, and thank you to everybody that participated in the site walk today.
And survived.
Except the one or two, one or two that are still out there. All right, gentlemen, next meeting, Tuesday, May ninth, at six-thirty, do we have any other closing business, any details, any mop up?
Well, thank you, sir.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, any discussion? Hearing none, by voice vote, all is in favor, aye, those opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.